Okay, we're ready. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri for Tuesday, November 11th, 2025. First order item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
Councilmember Falkingham.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Greenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Homa.
Here.
Councilmember Maddox.
Here.
Councilmember Page.
Here.
Councilmember Wiley.
Here.
Mayor Greenberg, a quorum is present.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for October 28th, 2025 work session and the October 28th regular meeting minutes.
Motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
We have motion, second. Any changes, revisions, discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Item number six is a public hearing, a request by James Lee for a conditional use permit to operate a self-service laundromat in the A.B. Arterial Business District at 2425 South Big Ben Boulevard. Do we have anyone signed up to talk about the?
There are no speakers on this topic.
Okay. And just to clarify, this is the property that was formerly the 7-Eleven. And also, there are provisions within the conditional use permit to make sure that we don't have some of the air pollution issues and smell issues that we have at the other laundromat on Big Ben. So.
Is this one of the ones where we'll get a finding of fact where it goes down the list? Yeah. So we'll get a chance to know that for sure.
Item number seven is public comment. Is there anyone signed up?
Not at this time.
Okay. Keep in mind, there's an opportunity at the end of the agenda to also make public comment. So announcements.
Yeah, we've got a couple of things coming up. We have a senior fair on 11/19. Is that, do we know where that is?
I don't know that I have the details on that.
At the Heights. At the Heights. Thank you. We have Small Business Saturday on 11/29, or as I like to call it, the day that I get the best Christmas gifts for people who don't know how cool we are here. And then we've got the Christmas Tree Walk on 12/5, which is a super awesome event. I highly recommend everyone go.
Can I add one that I didn't get to you?
Heck, yeah.
The next two weekends are scouting for food. Watch your door handle for a bag this Saturday and then set that bag with groceries in it out next Saturday, and the scouts will helpfully take it to a collection center, actually the firehouse provided by our lovely firefighters. And we'll get all that collected. It is, it was founded here in St. Louis. It is one of the largest food drives in the country. It's something we should all be really proud of and participate in, and it's super awesome, and we really need it right now.
Really need it.
Thanks.
Lovely firefighters. I'm just saying. Next, are there any other announcements? Item number nine is presentations. So I would like to call up Captain Paul Sidlowski. Let me make sure I get the right one here. And I do have to read it, otherwise it wouldn't be official. And this is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri honoring and commending Captain Paul Sidlowski on the occasion of his retirement after 30 years of service with the City of Maplewood. Whereas Paul Sidlowski began his career with the City of Maplewood as a firefighter EMT on October 27th, 1995. And whereas through excellence in service and demonstrated leadership abilities, he has risen through the ranks of the department, being promoted to captain in 2010. And whereas throughout his 30 years of service, he has shown unwavering commitment to the safety and well-being of our community. And whereas on October 7th, 2024, Captain Sidlowski demonstrated extraordinary heroism during a devastating fire in Shrewsbury, entering a burning building and rescuing a young child and an adult from a second-story apartment. And whereas Captain Sidlowski suffered a major cardiac event during this heroic rescue operation, yet his first concern remained for the residents he was sworn to protect. And whereas his courageous actions earned him the Mid-County Chamber of Commerce Hometown Hero Award in '25. And whereas Captain Sidlowski has garnered the admiration and respect of his colleagues and the entire community. And whereas Captain Sidlowski will retire from service on November 17th, 2025. And whereas the City of Maplewood has greatly benefited from his dedication, heroism, and leadership. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri as follows. The mayor and city council, on behalf of all of our citizens, do hereby honor and commend Captain Paul Sidlowski on his attainment of 30 years of service with the City of Maplewood, and be it further resolved that the city council thanks Captain Paul Sidlowski for his 30 years of distinguished and courageous service to the Maplewood community and offers best wishes for a happy and fulfilling retirement. I'd like to call the fire chief up here for a second. In the meantime, is there anything that you want to say or address to?
Yeah. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve the City of Maplewood for 30 years. It's truly been my second home. And I've taken it seriously as part of, kind of like being family, you know, taking care of the citizens. And to be able to serve with this group of guys and gal here for, you know, a lot of these guys, some of them most of my career, some are newer. And even, I'd like to thank the police, Police Chief Matt Nyber and your guys for, again, having our backs. We can't do our jobs without you guys. And honestly, you guys were there a lot over my 30 years, trust me. Good times and bad times in Maplewood, and things are really looking good now. The progression of this city over 30 years is amazing. If you haven't been here for 30 years, it is definitely an evolution, and it's just continue to, you know, stay positive and push and be, you know, for the citizens, the people, and be a leader in the area, you know, doing certain things. That's just how, starting in '95 and what they've done up to this point, that's what they had to do. And that's why Maplewood is desirable, you know? So, again, I'd like to thank everybody, thank my family, my wife, especially after this last year. She's been my rock, and thank you. Thank you. I love you very much.
Amber, if you could come up here for a quick second.
We'll resume in just a second here.
So Paul, as the fire chief, I can't with good conscience let you retire for all the outstanding things that you have done without officially promoting you to the rank of battalion chief. We have here a wallet for you with your badge and your retirement ID that identifies you as a battalion chief. All right?
Thank you very much.
We're going to get your helmet showed for you.
And next on the agenda is an MRH school update by Dr. Benita Jamison, our superintendent.
Thank you, Mayor Greenberg, council members, community, for having me today and allowing me to give an update of where we are in the district, as well as to thank you for your support of both of our propositions that successfully passed. We couldn't do it without your support and also the community's support. So I wanted to start off with our mission. I did exclude some of the slides from the last presentation, but really wanted to highlight the portion where it says, "We support, educate, encourage, and nurture one another to reach our full potential in order to create a better community." And what we recognize is that the community is the pillar, and the school district is a reflection of the community, and we are because of the community, and I am honored to be able to serve in the role of superintendent. This is our vision for the school district. It has not changed. We still are preparing students to be leaders, scholars, and stewards and citizens who would drive diverse change in an ever-changing world. These are our core values, and we really have been leaning into our core values of belonging, inspiration, success, courage, and integrity. And I'll talk a little bit more about this as we get further into the presentation. So the school district is in a five-year strategic plan. It was adopted by the Board of Education in 2023, and it expires in 2028. We do believe that it's a living, breathing document, and we revisit this document annually and also have board committees that help us live out our strategic plan. These are the five pillars that we focus our efforts on for our students, health, people, resources, and community. Tonight, I will be providing an update on the outcomes related to our students, our people, and our resources. So this is the starting point. We're here to serve our students, and we do that through the adults who serve them. And MRH just received our annual performance report from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. The report indicated that we are the first district. Last year, when I reported, we were fourth. Out of 533 districts, of the K-12 districts, and we had one district that was a K-8 district that is actually first. So out of 533 districts, we're in the top 1%. We earn 98.5% of the points that are awarded and actually received 100% of our growth points. And I did want to emphasize growth points because typically, most districts struggle with moving the needle for our students who receive free and reduced lunch, also Black and Brown students, and students who also are supported through special school district. And so while we're not where we want to be, we continue to see continuous improvement year over year. The district still continues to support our whole-child efforts, and so having social-emotional curriculum for students continues to be a focus, in addition to partnering with the community to bring forward additional supports for students from a social-emotional standpoint. And then lastly, we track a lot of data, and what you will find there is that student belonging is critical. We've been pushing really hard on that piece, and we've had an improvement from the previous two years from 3.22% to 3.43%. And this piece is critical. While we focus on academic achievement, if students don't have a trusted adult in the building where they are actually being educated, it makes it very difficult for them to have a sense of belonging and to invest it in the learning. I did, for your review, list the surrounding districts for us to review and how MRH landed within the scope of the ones who are there. We have been, again, identified for the best high school in the region, and so we are 11th in St. Louis and 8th in the St. Louis County School Districts for the best high school, and we're actually 8th by niche as far as one of the best districts in the state of Missouri. So, again, a reflection of our community, and I'm honored to be able to serve and continue to provide our students with a quality of education. For our people, investing in those who serve, they are the reason why we're able to move the needle. And so while the board sets the vision, I help with strategy in ensuring that there is a level of accountability. At one point, we were struggling with staff retention, so I am proud to say that over the last two years, we've been able to increase our staff retention to 95%, and we've put a lot of effort into that. One of them is our addition to what we call Highlight. It gives us an opportunity to celebrate our staff, and anyone can send them, and we align it to our core values, which you saw earlier. In addition, we've added Blue Devil kudos, and thank you to Ed Ridge and Abby Irwin, so families, and also members of the council can send teachers a Blue Devil kudo if they've done something to support their child. And I think sometimes that goes a long way, because while money is great, it's nice to hear from a parent that something they did in the classroom actually impacted their learner. From a standpoint of professional learning, this is an area where we continue to focus our efforts. We recognize that having talented educators in the classroom is not just about retention, it's about continuing to grow them so that we can address the gaps that we still do have. So we can proudly say that 100% of our staff have participated in equity professional development, as well as data-driven professional development through our professional learning communities, and this helps us to sustain the growth that we are currently seeing so that we can continue to see growth over time. And then I've already spoken to the recognition and allowing voice there as well. Lastly, for our resources, want to give Mayor Greenberg a special shout-out. He's been donating for free, might I add, some of his services for one of our projects, and we're grateful for that. Every little bit does count, but also, again, to the community for passing our two props that were presented in April. So we are not only on time with the implementation of Proposition B, but we are under budget currently, and so I do want to celebrate Dr. Michael Dietrich for ensuring that those projects are going the way that they're supposed to go, but also to make sure that we're good stewards with our community's funds. We are presenting our second audit, and actually, at the November 20th board meeting. Last year's audit was a clean audit. This one will reflect the same, and so we're continuing to foster those practices to ensure that our controls, as well as how we manage our money, is in alignment with the expectations with the auditors. Lastly, want to point to two areas, financial health and also community partnerships. So we have a fund balance, a very healthy fund balance of 43.9%, and it aligns with our efforts of actually keeping the fund balance above 40%. And we'll continue to monitor that, and you can see the trajectory that has occurred since 2019 to current. And we also continue to aggressively look for partnerships and grants. So the Early Childhood Center was just recently awarded an early literacy grant for $205,000, and a few years ago, we actually received a competency-based education grant from the Department of Education in the amount of $400,000. So we recognize that. We also have to be prudent with our community's funds, in addition to seeking new funding opportunities, and I'm a believer that you have not because you ask not. That concludes my presentation of the progress of Maplewood Richmond High School District. I welcome any questions you may have.
No questions from me, but just wanted to say thank you for your steadfast leadership. It's hard to keep track of all the accolades because they're coming so frequently. So just thanks for your leadership, and please pass that on to your administration, as well as the school board, teachers, and staff. I moved here for the school district, and it just continues to get better, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
I'll add to that. I have a freshman at the high school right now, and I just looked up the other day, and he was done with junior high, and I thought, "I got out of junior high in the early 90s, a broken human being." And he is not. He is functional and happy, and I fully credit the culture and your leadership and that team at those schools. I fully agree with what Councilperson Homa said. I think y'all are doing a great job. Keep it up.
Thank you.
I agree with my colleagues as an alumni and a parent of several students in the district. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and I will speak as somebody who does not yet have a child in the district, but has a child. I just continue to be excited to be in a place where we can trust that the quality of the education and the resources being made available are something that make us want to stay here, so thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you. And for you, in May, we have something special planned. We'll have a night at the Magic House, which will give our families who have little Blue Devils who are transitioning in an opportunity to meet some of our other families, so that information will be forthcoming. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you so much.
Moving on to item number 10 is under unfinished businesses, Bill 6298. Final reading, amending the Maplewood Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Administration, to enact new sections relating to open meetings and records.
Motion to approve the bill.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Falkingham.
Yes.
Bill 6298 is approved as ordinance 692.
Thank you. Next item is Bill 6299, final reading, amending the 2025-2026 fiscal year budget to increase the Proposition S budget for street and sidewalk improvements.
Motion to approve the bill.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Falkingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Bill 6299 is approved as ordinance 693.
Next item is under new businesses, Resolution 25-48, approving the designation of Fire Chief Pete Marsack as acting city manager during the city manager's temporary absence or unavailability.
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Falkingham.
Yes.
Bill 6298 is approved as ordinance 692.
Thank you. Next item is Bill 6299, final reading, amending the 2025-2026 fiscal year budget to increase the Proposition S budget for street and sidewalk improvements.
Motion to approve the bill.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Falkingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Bill 6299 is approved as ordinance 693.
Next item is under new businesses, Resolution 25-48, approving the designation of Fire Chief Pete Marsack as acting city manager during the city manager's temporary absence or unavailability.
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion?
I just want to thank Chief Marsack for being able to help us out.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Falkingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Resolution 2448 is approved.
Thank you. Next is Resolution 25-49, appointing Andy Bryan to the Police Advisory Board and establishing his term of office as expiring on June 30th, 2029.
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? It looks like we have, since we're initially populating this board, we had quite a few applicants for the board, and all of them were deserving, and we had to narrow it down to five, so there will be opportunities in the future. But, you know, thank you for everyone that applied and didn't necessarily, is not necessarily appointed. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Falkingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Resolution 2449 is approved.
Next is Resolution 25-50, appointing Corinne Char to the Police Advisory Board and establishing her term of office as expiring on June 30th, 2029.
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Falkingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Resolution 2550 is approved.
Next item is Resolution 25-51, appointing Sheila Sudewalla to the Police Advisory Board and establishing her term of office as expiring on June 30th, 2028.
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Falkingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Resolution 2551 is approved.
Next item is Resolution 25-52, appointing Linda Robinson to the Police Advisory Board and establishing her term of office as expiring June 30th, 2028.
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Falkingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Resolution 2552 is approved.
Next item is Resolution 25-53, appointing Kevin Chase to the Police Advisory Board and establishing his term of office as expiring June 30th, 2027.
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Falkingham.
Yes.
Resolution 2553 is approved.
Next item is Bill 6300, first and second reading, granting James Lee a conditional use permit to operate a self-service laundromat in the A.B. Arterial Business District located at 2425 South Big Ben Boulevard.
Motion to approve the bill.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? As I mentioned earlier, there are restrictions on emissions from the facility to help protect our neighboring citizens, so I'm glad to see that that was included in that.
Also good just to have it occupied, a black box for a while, so.
Yeah, as a Ward 1 resident, I'm really excited to see a business going.
Yeah, it's a service that everyone can use as opposed to some of the other uses that have been suggested. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Second reading, granting James Lee a conditional use permit to operate a self-service laundromat in the A.B. Arterial Business District at 2425 South Big Ben Boulevard.
Motion to approve the bill.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill will move on to its third and final reading at the next meeting. Bill 6301, first and second reading, amending the 2024-2025 fiscal year budget to adjust budget appropriations.
Motion to approve the bill.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Amber, would you like to discuss what the adjustment was?
I'll go ahead and hand this one off to our finance directors, since it's a rather complex and long ordinance.
So I'm not sure if you all remember, we did this last year, I think we've done this every year. It's a budget amendment to our prior year budget because by state law, we have to remain in, you know, under budget. We cannot overspend what we've appropriated. And so if there's any kind of discrepancies at year end, when we find out that, you know, we had to buy something or something came in higher than what we had anticipated, we need to make those adjustments. So there are several adjustments to almost every single fund that we have. Some of them are a little bit bigger, some of them a little bit smaller, and I know that we had a couple of copies of this go out today, and that's because the auditor that was here was, we're still working and found a couple of small tweaks that they needed to do, minor adjustments, just to make sure that we were going to be in compliance for our audit when it's sent to the state auditor. Is there any questions about any of the particular amendments? No?
Have we, just philosophical question, as we go through this year after year, and I know you've been working to get our budget process much more, you know, organized, transparent, and granular, do you feel like we can start anticipating some variances better going forward to have fewer of these, or is it just mostly just things out of our control?
Um, we would have, I think, fewer of them, yes, but I think we probably always would have a few, just because they're, as, as year goes through, we project, we'll say, you know, we're going to get this much done on a street project, but if we don't actually get that much done, we don't get billed for it, then we actually wind up having to do a budget amendment. Or if we get more done, then won't be thought, we have to do a budget amendment. So it's just kind of a little bit up and down. One thing that we don't have to adjust is our revenue, and our revenue all went up in relation to these expenses. So most of them are like different things for like grants and things like that, or things that transpired, so, and revenue went up, so we were fine. But I just want to let you know, it will get smaller, but we'll probably always have something.
Yeah, thank you. Welcome.
No, it's to be expected.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for staying on it, too. Appreciate it.
No problem. All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. We have a motion, a second, and discussion. Voice, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Second reading, Bill 6301, amending the 2024-2025 fiscal year budget to adjust budget appropriations.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill will move on to its third and final reading at the next meeting. The next one is Bill 6302, first and second reading, amending the 2025-2026 fiscal budget to adjust budget appropriations.
Motion to approve the bill?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Second reading, amending the 2025-2026 fiscal budget, year budget to adjust budget appropriations.
Motion to approve the bill?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill will move on to its third and final reading at the next meeting. Next item is Bill 6302, first and second reading, calling for a bond election in the city of Maplewood, Missouri.
Motion to approve this bill?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. As far as discussion, we had a work session tonight talking about the bond election, and if you weren't here, you can view it on YouTube. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Second reading, calling a bond election in the city of Maplewood, Missouri.
Motion to approve the bill?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill will move on to its third and final reading at the next meeting. Next are council and staff reports. Mayor's report, we held a pancake breakfast at MRH High School over the weekend, and we don't have the final number, but we made probably around $3,000 in Kiwanis International and Kiwanis Club of Maplewood in particular supports our educational programs. We provide scholarships. I think we provided six scholarships last year, and, and so, and all the veterans ate for free. And speaking of veterans, I'd like to thank every veteran that lives in Maplewood and the United States for their service to our country. In addition, Nurses for Newborns is looking for contributions with SNAP subsidies being cut. There's people out there that don't have formula for their babies. Nurses for Newborns is a Maplewood-based program on Sunning, and they're worthy of our support, yes, and the same goes for the after-school program at the Salvation Army. They have a latchkey program for kids, and that's another, and I'm sure there's, you know, plenty more charities and organizations in Maplewood that could use some help. Do we have a Ward One report?
Yeah. Go ahead. I just wanted to make kind of a general statement about Maplewood in general. So obviously, with SNAP funds not being issued, then being partially issued, maybe, maybe not, we have seen just a groundswell of need in our community, and I have been amazed at how much people are just flocking to help take care of each other. We are seeing it with our charities, we're seeing it with our mini pantries, we're seeing it with people and businesses doing food drives. We have scouting for food coming up. I'm hoping you guys have just a banner year for it. And I just want to say, like, that to me is another reflection of what makes Maplewood Maplewood in our own culture. I have been bragging to a lot of my friends, in other states even, like, hey, why aren't you as good as us? You know, why aren't you more engaged? Why aren't you caring for each other the way we do? So I just want to say my thanks out to our community, and just that we see it and we appreciate you.
Thank you. I first wanted to ask you, Mayor, about the Nurses for Newborns, is formula the main need?
They provide quite a few other services.
Diapers.
And also.
Clothing.
Yeah. And so, and I can give you their EIN number if you need it.
Thank you. No, appreciate it. I was just curious. Other than that, I have nothing else to report, but I just wanted to remind everybody that since there are fewer council, council meetings during the holidays, that I just wanted to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and happy holiday season in light of everything that's going on, so. That's all from Ward One.
Ward Two?
I've got nothing. You got anything?
I've got nothing.
Nothing to report?
Everything's going really well in Ward Two, apparently. Ward Three?
The best word? Uh.
Watch it.
I don't have anything to report.
Nothing to report for me.
Next item is the City Attorney's Report.
No report tonight.
And the next item then is the City Manager's Report.
Yes, I've got another long one for you. One item that I wanted to include that isn't in my written report is a reminder that the City's Brand Initiative Open House is tomorrow from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. This is your chance to come in person and tell us what makes Maplewood Maplewood. There will be some interactive activities. Drop in, spend a couple of minutes, give us your feedback. We just need a little bit of your time. The survey that we've issued throughout the community that's available to any resident, any business, anybody who's passing through, you can find that QR code on those yard signs. That will stay open until the 18th of this month. We've already gotten some really great response, but we want to hear from absolutely everyone we can, so please spread the word. And council members, if you haven't answered it, please do. All right. In addition to Proposition M, our ballot for the April 7th election will also include two of our incumbents. Ward One, Councilmember Krista Garcia. Ward Two, Councilmember Chastity Maddox, running unopposed for their wards. Councilmember Falkingham has made the tough decision to step away from his many, many, many years of dedicated service to this council. And in his place, Mark Vandennacher, who is on our Plan and Zoning Commission, filed and is the only candidate on the ballot for Ward Three. So unless we have some write-in challengers, that will be our budget, sorry, that won't be our budget, that will be our ballot. Our budget's going to be a lot more complicated than that.
Yeah.
Okay. I know when council members asked for me to provide an update on the Yale-Manchester-Lindover area at the last meeting, you probably didn't expect quite such a lengthy update, but I really wanted to work intentionally with staff to include as much information and as much context as we possibly could in this to help you give us the feedback that you think is most appropriate for us to continue to address the public safety challenges that we're having in the area, as well as the needs for those in our community to both recreate and be present in some of our public spaces, as well as wait for the bus and get food and feel comfortable existing in those spaces without being bothered by our police or other individuals. So I just wanted to sort of create that space for us to talk. In this report, I know you've all read my memo, it's available as part of the meeting packet. Are there questions or items that I can elaborate on before you get into your discussion?
Yeah, just so that everyone knows, not, not everyone might know that we do have a social services coordinator, and she's been attending every event that, you know, I've seen her everywhere, and we're very lucky to have Celeste as our social services coordinator, and hopefully she can work with our police department and help resolve some of the issues that we're experiencing there.
And she is already doing so. I didn't ask her to attend this meeting because she's had a very long day of other activities that she needed to engage in and assistance she needed to provide, but she's aware of the conversation and has given feedback, and will be at the December 9th meeting to talk about the emergency warming shelter proposal that Human Services is planning to put forward.
I guess I'll kick it off, maybe a couple of questions. We've talked about this a few times now, and I'm curious if either Chief Nyber or Amber, you can comment from a staff perspective on if we still think the power being turned off and the bench being removed from the shelter is doing anything to deter crime? I know we've had issues there, still criminal activity since that has happened, and so I kind of just want to hear maybe from staff on feedback about that approach moving forward.
Yeah, I'll ask Chief Nyber to come up, but I will note that the first version of this memo that you received was different from the one you received today because we did have two fairly significant episodes of gun violence in the neighborhood over the weekend, and I do think inevitably that shifts our interpretation to some degree, so I'll let Chief Nyber speak to that.
If you've looked at the memo, have calls decreased at the bus shelter? Yes, they have, but there's several outliers there. It's not definitive data, but we've only had one call for services at, since the removal in early September. So, yes, the calls for service has decreased at that shelter, if that's what you're asking on that. I know there's questions for Amber and I about benchmarks and when to place a bench, put in a place. The drug activity and, and I'll call it as gun violence, is still a very, very concern. Our number one priority is public safety. When you have individuals that congregate that aren't utilizing the bench for its purposes for, you know, possibly metro, or using the food pantry, there's propensity for matters to escalate, and we've seen that with assaults and disturbances because of alcohol consumption or, you know, drug activity there. I know that's hard and difficult for this community here, but I cannot tell another family member or loved one that they, that their son, daughter, any family member has lost to gun violence or drugs. I mean, I've done so many of those notifications, and it's hard. We had to do it last night again. We lost a member of this community to drugs, of an overdose, a young, young male, so. Right now, we have to do what's best interest for public safety, and Amber and I work on this consistently. This is taking a lot of our time, what's the best approach? We don't have the absolute best approach that's going to satisfy everyone in this community. I'm just trying to look at public safety as a number one concern, and, you know, we saw some increased activity at the bus shelter, and there were some disturbances, as noted in these calls for services. We're getting several calls a week, has taken away police services and that, and then it looks like overpolicing to those in the community. I mean, it's not the best look to have two or three police vehicles down there consistently to those residents who live in the area, to the visitors of our community, to business members, it's just, you know, and potential people looking to move in this community. I've heard from apartment owners who are having concerns leasing this out because of the activity. So first and foremost, we've got, we are addressing the public safety in our area. I've talked to Amber, we are authorizing overtime, there will be extra police presence during this holiday season for vehicle crimes, and more specifically, the gun incidents. I mean, when you have over 30 rounds fired on Sunday night, and the potential, I mean, some of those rounds, one of those rounds went through an apartment building occupied. I, we cannot accept that. So, Councilmember Homer, answer your, and the community's concern about the bus shelter, that was a temporary matter. We've got to look at all ways to displace some of the criminal activity, and let us work on our end, the police department, in our investigations and proactive approaches to that. So I don't know if I answered the question on that, but these are avenues right now.
No, I appreciate that. It, yeah, it's a tough question to answer, but I appreciate that information.
Yeah, and it is, and we're looking for guidance on that. I don't have the answer, but when you, and we've seen this, when groups are gathering, it's kind of taken away from the other needs, and it does escalate, it's just a fact, you know? Since the, the bench has been removed, I can show you data, we haven't had calls. But again, that's, there's outliers to that, you know, the season's changing, the weather's changing, so, you know, it's been a little chilly in that right now, rainy, so, and then, you know, it's not a definitive data to compare, I mean, that'd take a year to see, to compare to past, you know, to go through all the seasons and all, all the events, so. I hope that kind of answers the question. I know it's still vague, and Amber, you know, she's doing a phenomenal job trying to balance the needs, so, so are we. We're not trying to deprive anybody, you know, we're just trying, our first matter is public safety, and there's concerns in that area. There really, really are.
I appreciate you, Chief. You know I live in that area, you know where I live. I have to drive by that area to even get off of my street to come into Maplewood. I'm invested in that area. I think all the steps that Amber and you have taken so far to reach out to different organizations, to, by state, to find out about a different bench and a different placement, I have also applied for a grant to have the pantry, to have a new pantry structure installed where Amber and I met with Maplegood in a different location, very near to that area. I am not in favor of restoring those benches and that power at this time. I might have been before what happened the other night, but I heard that. And to hear that many gunshots in rapid succession with your windows closed and your heat on at 8:30 on a Sunday night is jarring. It's terrifying, and a lot of kids live in that area, and they are subjected to this on a daily basis. We have to find other solutions.
Yeah, and with all due respect on that, we're not saying that shelter led to these incidents.
Right.
But I have to look and protect the community, and there's a potential there, propensity there, when people are gathering, and we have drug transactions, drug use, alcohol consumption. I don't want to see someone seriously injured or innocent bystanders due to gun violence because we've had too many of those incidents in this community over the past few years, and no more. We cannot, we cannot all as a community accept that.
And those incidents are concentrated in that area. We haven't just had them in the broader Maplewood area. They are concentrated in that teeny tiny area of Maplewood, and we need better solutions.
Yeah, and Amber provided, I think you have provided some updates on our shots fired, reported calls. Now, some of those are fireworks, but the confirmed cases of shell casings, where we actually know, yes, it is concentrated in that corridor. Yes, it is.
Yeah, I just want to, first of all, I want to thank Amber and Chief Nyber for all of the time and effort that's been put into this, as a direct result of us asking for you to put more time and effort into it, and really appreciate the response. There's so much information in this packet and, um, I just, again, I really appreciate the time and, and allowing us to continue to ask about this. I also wanna give respect to like how incredibly complex this issue is. Because without a doubt, um, there's agreement, um, from this side of the dais that public safety is absolutely, um, a number one concern. I, um, I think what is, um, really difficult about making decisions like this about how to respond is trying to determine how many communities are impacted by the decisions that are made. And so I think for me, um, I, you know, we keep talking about the, the measures is temporary. We keep getting updates on what's going on over there. And so the most critical thing from, from my end would be trying to determine what it will take to restore the shelter to the resource that it's been for people. Again, you know, I don't, I don't wanna make light of how serious the, the crimes are that are being committed over there. I just wanna make sure that this issue does not, um, that the, the, uh, the measures being taken at any point end up being finite. You know, I, I was reading through the packet, Amber, of some of the, um, some of the alternative options that have been provided. Sorry, let me go back here. The, the organization offering to provide some benches, um, CMT, Citizens for Modern Transit. You know, I'm, I'm, I don't know about the rest of the council, but I'm, I'm very, um, open to, um, being donated, um, free benches. I like the idea of that. In light of some of the communities impacted by the bench removal. I am concerned about the statement in here that talks about the benches including the arm bisecting the full stretch of the seating area. The, the, the optics of that in light of what's going on, given that the unhoused community is impacted by the removal of the bench and the moving of the, um, the food pantry. I would, far be it from me to say that I don't wanna accept free resources, but the, um, the architecture being such that it would prevent certain communities from using it, um, uh, for laying down or resting, that is concerning to me. It, it's, it doesn't, um, it, it appears, it would appear to send a message to an already impacted community by what's going on, um, that we don't want them using those resources for certain kinds of rest. And so, um, I would be open to receiving the benches, obviously, but I'd like to know what the possibility would be of editing the benches, making some adjustments to the benches. Because I definitely don't think we wanna create a, a message that we are open to the installation of hostile architecture.
So can I ask a clarifying question? Is, is council's goal in the restoration of the bench, and I know you're not unanimous in your feelings about this, to provide a place for people to sit and wait for the bus? Or is it to provide a place for people to sleep overnight? Or is it both?
I, I, I could certainly see the purpose of that being for both. I mean, um, I think that the bench has become an area that is being used for more than just waiting for the bench. And so I'd hate to see us, uh, waiting for the bus. So I'd hate to see us, um, you know, changing the way that that community is making use of that as a, a resource for other things.
So I wanna point out something that I think staff continues to grapple with, which is that by ordinance, we do not allow people to sleep overnight in our parks. This is not a park. This is a city-owned space that has no definition around allowable use for the space. That's something council may choose to address or may not choose to address. When we encounter people who wish to sleep overnight in Maplewood, we wanna intervene and find them a place to sleep inside if we can. That's not always possible. That is absolutely not always possible and not always preferable. But our preference is to work closely with those individuals if they choose to live outside, to find an appropriate location for them to do so. I can't say with authority how many people have been sleeping outside under that shelter, but I would, I would hazard a guess that we know who those individuals are, that Celeste, our social services coordinator, does know who those individuals are. And that we do have a relationship with them and that we do wanna continue to work with them to find an appropriate place to sleep if they choose to sleep outside.
I, I think the bench issue is, it's important, but I think if the best Maplewood has to offer is a bench without a arm in the middle, I, I think most, I mean, from what I gathered at our ward meetings, that's not enough anyways. So, and I know it's easy to say, well, fine, then just do it or don't do it because it's, you know, it doesn't even register, but it doesn't register. Us providing a bench and a, you know, I, I'm not gonna feel good about that because hey, we gave them the good kinda bench instead of the bad kinda bench, it's still bench in a shelter.
Right.
So I think if we wanna take this issue on, we take it on. You know, for me right now, it's not, yeah, public safety is gonna rain because I also live within a block of all this nonsense and it's getting a little scary. But, you know, everybody we've talked to, both amongst ourselves, at our ward meetings, this community wants to support our unhoused community or whomever is needing to use bench space to relax. But I think, you know, if that's our answer is, well, we'll put the bench back and we wipe our hands and walk away and smile and think we did a great job, I, that's not satisfactory anyways. So to me, it's part of a bigger conversation. It's easy to get up here and say that, I don't have the solutions either. I think everybody's sort of grasping for what that is. But I, you know, I'm just not gonna waste a lot of energy worrying about one bench and one shelter when I think that's such a small, God, it's, it's just not important. It's not part of the bigger picture that I think we're up against here.
I don't want the benches that have the arms on them. I just, I don't, for a couple of reasons. One, everyone knows what they're trying to do. So I think in a lot of ways, if we sit here and say to the community, we understand people are trying to find solutions. We took your bench away, here's another bench, haha, you can't use it for that. That's, that's very insulting to the people who use our spaces.
Yeah, but you know what? I, I really think that if, if we had a really robust way to handle this, and I know that we are doing the best we can with the resources that we have, I thi, I think we are. But if we had a better solution, then we could, you could proudly have any bench there you wanted, however partitioned it is, because you could say, well, you don't need to worry about the bench. We have this better solution in place.
I agree with you.
You know, start thinking about what are those and why aren't we doing those?
Right. The other thing, quite frankly, as a wider hipped, butted person, um, sometimes the hostile architecture is actually just too narrow for me to even use. I know, right? So I'm sitting here and I'm like, who's supposed to use this? Then people who get up and leave. So anyways, I don't, I don't really want a free bench that people can't use well. Personal opinion, one of six. The other thing is, I wanna know, is there anything we can expedite that's in the works that we think can help with mitigating the crime concerns? Can we get street, we talked about solar streetlights in some dark areas. Can we expedite them? Is there anything, what are the levers that we can do? Cause there's no one fix and I know we're trying and it's, can we do this, maybe that, what about this? Is there anything in flight that we can speed up that might help as an intervention measure?
Yes, if I may, Amber, i- is that proposed bus, um, bench outside the shelter or?
Correct, so those are our transit benches that would be adjacent, they would be at the bus stops on, on both sides of Manchester as a bus bench for people to, to wait for the bus.
Just so council's understood on that.
Yeah.
Not under the shelter itself.
Okay, that makes more sense, I'm sorry, I did not understand that, thank you.
Yeah, um, we would also, we've also done measurements. CMT has offered to help us secure grant funding for a bus shelter adjacent alongside the street, much like our other bus shelters that are along Manchester. We don't have enough room on the south side of the street. The sidewalks are not deep enough there, but we do on the north side of Manchester. So much like the other shelters, uh, we could install a, a covered structure over the, one of the bus benches on the north side of the road.
I, I worked with Citizens for Modern Transit and AARP designing a bus shelter at Thirteenth and Gravoy. And we, we grappled with all the same issues there. And, uh, I haven't done a follow-up to see if that design yielded, you know, positive results. It's better than what they had, that's for sure. And, and their situation is a little bit different there. We have a, a, a much higher population. Most of the people there at, at Thirteenth and Gravoy are waiting for the bus. Or they're hanging out at the, uh, the, the convenience store next door. So each, each situation is so different and there's so many issues with regards to causation that it's really difficult and, um, you know, but I think we have all the right people working on it, on a problem that doesn't have an easy solution. And, uh, as we talked about, we'll try different, different solutions. And if they don't work, then we'll try different ones.
Councilmember Garcia, you asked specifically about what we can do from a public safety perspective.
Yeah, if there's anything, you know, if there's stuff that's been planned for maybe Q1, Q2, 2026, if we can pull it in, just to sound like my annoying bosses at my day job, you know, what can we expedite? But that is kinda the question, like, are there things that were already being planned that maybe we can say, hmm, you know what, we can do this first or this sooner?
It takes time.
Yeah.
I mean, we got to work on the drugs, the drug sales and, and our Maplewood detectives worked several months affecting, uh, two individuals that were involved in drug sales and guns. So that takes time, that's on the back end of things. There's gonna have to be extra patrols, there's gonna be all over time and, you know, we have to show a presence, consistent presence as best we can there. Maybe additional cameras on a, a few streets. Right now we have coverage, uh, right in front of, uh, basically Yale and Manchester. That's really our own, uh, public safety camera. But the cameras, uh, including the flock cameras have been very, very helpful, they really have. I, I can't tell you what those have done in investigations. A lot of times we have to use reset cameras right now. They have great cameras there to rely on gathering evidence in that, in video, so. And then meeting with some of these, um, you know, a lot of that is rental units. Meeting with some of these property managers and property owners, those individuals that are gonna cause harm to our society, you know, have to move on from here and working with management and the property owners. We can't allow guns, we can't allow drugs and work with us, work with the community to do what is right. And, you know, sorry to say, but they have to be removed from the, you know, the apartments. But that takes some processes from those owners and managers, if they are local too, that's another thing, so.
Can I ask the question a slightly different way? Is there any lack of ordinance or, um, existence of an ordinance that says, man, if we didn't have that or if we had that, we, no, okay.
Not right.
Cause that's where we can swoop in, I think, is like reformulate things, but you all have the resources. Right, right.
No, that's something we can do.
I would note, we had a, a very significant gun violence incident at three o'clock in the afternoon last year in that location. It, it isn't necessarily about the eyes on the street or the lighting. There, some of this is very flagrant and it's very challenging to, to get at the root of.
Yeah, it's very unpredictable, but we have to do our best to displace and do what we can.
Yeah, I wanna, I mean, I wanna point out what the mayor said is that, you know, all, all these individuals are, are, are different. They all have different situations. And, you know, I, I, you know, I'll help as a council member in any way that I can, but I, I, I am no expert in, in, in making decisions on public safety because I'm not in it every day, you know? I just assume that up to people who do know, like police chief and Amber and people. You know, if you guys come up with a plan, we're not biased, but we trust you guys. I mean, we, you know, you have done a fantastic job up to this point. And, and I have faith that we'll, we'll find some solution. It might not be perfect, but it'd be much better than it is now. So, you know, uh, you know, let us know what you need, you know, to help you do your job better.
And that's the avenues the city manager and I look at and, you know, but I'm excited about this police advisory board. These are some issues we could bring up with our five new members.
Agreed.
As far as some, you know, guidance and suggestions as vested community members here, you know? So these are opportunities for that as well.
Yeah, and I just wanna say, like, I, uh, again, I just wanna reiterate, like, I fully understand your position is public safety. I think that, um, you know, uh, Chief Nyber, over a long period of time as chief, has done a lot of, a lot of work with the police department to help bring a lot more compassion to the way that, um, public safety is handled. And so from my standpoint, sitting here, I, I hope, I hope you understand too that my role as well is to make sure that we're also thinking about all of the other communities as well. And so I think, you know, I completely agree with, um, Councilmember Faulkingham that, you know, we are not the experts on public safety. But we are here to represent all of the communities of Maplewood. And so my concern, just bringing it back to the potential donated benches with the way that they're set up, is that it does send a pretty clear message that is counter to the compassion that, that you and, um, Amber have tried to bring to the way that we are treating all of these communities. And so I love the idea of getting more benches brought and made available for use, um, by these communities. But I think that we, I do think we need to be careful about the message that we're sending, given that the unhoused community is an impacted community of this very complex issue.
Yeah, I think that's well said. I, I agree with a whole bunch of things that everybody said, but I'm still struggling with the fact that to me, these are two issues. There's a public safety issue and then there's the decisions that we've made about the shelter and the benches and the power, and I don't think they're the same issue. Public safety, I agree, like, I'm not an expert. We had a homicide over in this area last year and I didn't hear anyone come in complaining about congregation at the bus shelter or anything. Like, crime has been in that area. And I think, you know, there have been drugs and deals made in that area for a very long time, much longer than I've lived here. I've only recently heard about the issues that people have with folks congregating in the bus shelter. If that exacerbates the public safety issue, then I, I mean, that's what we heard from you, you know, recently. And I think that's.
This has been going on for a long time. I've been working in this community twenty-five years. It's been a point of congregation where the, you know, I'm not, you know, criminal activity has taken place frequently. To us, the police department, the benches and the shelter does, we will still respond and handle accordingly. It's the public. And I hear from so many people that you all don't hear from, why, police department, you're supposed to be here for us and why is this allowed? And what can we do? We're seeing this openly, you know, drug, alcohol consumption. And for us to consistently get on there to write someone a ticket for an open container, is that our best use of resources? So you gotta look at it from all angles. And I hear a lot on the opposite end from the community, this continues, this continues, it's every other day.
And then, but I totally hear you and I, I'm not looking at it from the resource use perspective, like, you guys are. And we have a shelter in Sutton Loop Park. We have unhoused folks that sleep there during the day and sometimes are there at night. There's no real criminal element associated to that. And so it's handled differently than what we did here. We didn't turn off power, we didn't remove picnic tables. And I'm not suggesting that they should be handled the same because it is a different scenario. But I do think the choice we've made on how to handle it does have impacts to other populations. And that's the, that's the part that I'm still wrestling with. It's a shelter. I would like for it to still be able to provide shelter to people, especially since we just talked a month ago about a warming shelter that was proposed from Human Services Commission. And we said, for insurance purposes, for budget purposes, like, there isn't a lot that we can do now. And there's certainly not a lot we can do right away. So I do think we should continue to discuss this issue for how we can provide resources for the unhoused in our community. I think at a minimum, I would like to see the benches put back and the power restored because I think there's a lot of people who are using those as resources that are provided by the city. But if that's going to cause additional criminal elements, I mean, we just had these shots fired, there's no power and there's no benches. So it's like, this is how I'm, I'm wrestling with this and I don't know the answer. Our job is policy and in this case, we're being asked to consult on this. I do not think there's a good answer, but I would like to find some middle ground that works and helps whatever you guys need to do from the public safety perspective without completely displacing the folks that still use that shelter and don't commit crimes there.
Yeah, and those are all fair assessments. With Sutton Park, if we start seeing increase in, in drug sales or, you know, further in criminal activity, I don't consider the unhoused as part of that, okay? I'm looking at crimes associated with escalation of disturbances, assaults and drug activity. Then we may have to address Sutton Loop at one point. And these are things, either our police advisory board, maybe I'll assist in, or, or you all on the guidance of that. So it's, it is different. And when we've had issues at Sutton Park with offender that was in the area that caused grave concern, we addressed that when we had a sex offender over there. So, you know, it is, I understand that, there is no perfect answer to this, there's no perfect solution. What I'm saying is Amber and I have worked our best on trying to listen to everybody in the community and balancing all the needs of everyone. And this is where, uh, I guess we're asking you all as the representatives of the community, our next steps on that. Because I don't have a metric, I can't answer a metric on the benchmark to bring the benches back or suggest that Chrissy come back, that's, they got up the police chief's or Amber's hands on that, to be honest with you.
Are we, and just if I can interrupt real quickly, I want to make very clear that it was not the police department's decision to remove the bench. That was mine and mine alone. In consultation with staff, but after we had that meeting on the 12th, and there was discussion about, hey, if we're having problems, let's take some things out of there to see if that's gonna disperse and displace people. That was not a police decision. Whether or not the bench is there, it impacts the activity, but they don't have an opinion about it, right? Like, that's not, that's not their role. They're gonna do what they need to do to keep the public safe. So I think, I just want to acknowledge, too, that when I have said I'm gonna consult with Chief about the metric, that's not his responsibility. That's mine.
I think, oh, sorry. I do think what I keep coming back to is, you're right, we have, like, two different cluster problems. We have the actions that were happening at the bus shelter that, you know, drug use, gun sales, daytime drug.
Can I interrupt you for one second?
Yeah, go ahead.
We have these problems because that area has been disinvested in for years. For my entire existence in this city, it is a different experience to live on that part of Ward Two than it is to live on your street where I grew up, or to live in Ward Three where Nick lives. It is a different experience.
Yeah, I completely agree. I want to give full respect to that and just say that that's the root of the issue here is investment in that area. And I think that, I want to make it very clear that I am a huge proponent of anything we can do to bring community space to that part of Maplewood. And though I don't live in Ward Two, and though I am the councilperson for Ward One, I'm thinking all the time about all of the impacted populations of this community. And we all vote equally on all of the issues that impact this entire community. And so, I think that what we're dealing with here is a temporary solution to an extremely long-term, complex problem that you probably understand more than anyone as somebody who lives over there. And so, while, first of all, I just, I want to say, thank you for allowing us to discuss this as a group because there's nothing here to vote on. The reality is, like you said, you have the ability to make this decision, and we want to be able to be here to support whatever decision that needs to be made, but also be honest about when we do or don't disagree with the complexities of the issue. I think what we're dealing with is, we need to determine what happens in the interim between now and investing in this area of the neighborhood. And I'm, you know, to piggyback off of what Councilmember Homer said, we're still seeing violent crime in the area regardless of the removal of those resources. And so, I would be a proponent of the temporary solution as opposed to saying, let's remove the resources while we figure out what's going on or what we're going to do long-term, of keeping the resources there that are used by this minority population while we figure out what we're gonna do. And we continue to come up with potential solutions to this issue while the long-term solution is investing in the area. I love the idea of making this a first order of business for the police advisory board. I don't think we can solve this problem without the greater Maplewood community. And I do have a follow-up question, though. Is there any, is there any seasonal change in criminal activity? Like, do we see more or less activity as the winter months come?
It's so unpredictable. When it comes to gun violence, it's unpredictable. But when you have nice weather, and again, this is nothing against people congregating, but when you have congregation in that area, at that specific location, yes, the calls will increase because of the nice weather. It's just, you know, nice weather to drink out there or whatever and associate. And those have led to disturbances and assaults, as unfortunate as it is.
I just, just kind of a metrics question. Obviously, the outlier, of course, being the tons of shots fired at that one car the other day. Since the shelter has had power and the bench taken away, are we seeing fewer calls related to drugs and whatnot, like that kind of violence? Or are we just not seeing them there? Because I think one of the questions I have is, do we see a fewer volume in our community overall, or are we just seeing locations more dispersed?
At that particular shelter, the calls for services have dropped. Whether it's someone, you know, yelling or screaming, whether it's someone, we see someone drinking or someone smoking, whatever, that has dropped. We have not received the calls for service for that since the removal, so far.
What does our relationship with the City of St. Louis look like? Because I also sometimes wonder if, I know the answer to the question, but I, I'm getting to a point. Everybody's like, yeah. But like, do you, let me ask it a different way. Do you feel like the fact that we don't have, I feel like we don't have a great relationship with the city, figures into this? Because I sometimes think, well, part of it's the disinvestment in that end of Maplewood, but also part of it is because of who the neighbor is.
That's tough for me to answer. I know if I called my partners in St. Louis City Metropolitan Police Department, they would be there to assist, yes. As far as.
Especially in that area, they would say that that's a nice area. People don't feel unsafe getting out of their car to go into Michael's Bar and Grill, and it's in St. Louis City. So that's the good part of the city.
Yeah, I'd like to make two hopefully brief comments. One was when I got here in Maplewood, moved my office here in 1988, I immediately got involved in the Economic Development Committee of the Chamber of Commerce. And if anyone has been here that long, they know that we didn't have a stable community at that point. We had no retail. We had no restaurants. Housing was not in great shape. And it was a very long process. And we did stabilize the 71, 72, and 7300 block of Maplewood, Manchester, I should say, but, you know, and the effort has been to push this east to the city limits. And it's, it's, not only is it a slow process, but it's, it's a lot more difficult based on the resources that are there currently and the preponderance of apartments that are in that area. And, you know, so, you know, the effort did pay off, and I'm hoping that the solutions that we implement, you know, will have a similar effect so that we can extend the prosperity and safety that we have on the west side of town, you know, all the way to the city limits. The other issue is that Councilmember Garcia mentioned is with regards to lighting. And I'm hoping that the proposed project by the Sustainability Commission, that we could perhaps add some lighting to that area. I don't hang out there at night, so I don't know what areas are dark. But as an architect, I know that in terms of safety and security, that lighting is one component. And the proposal that they have is only for four solar lighting units. But, you know, not being able, not having to hook up to the utilities. And, you know, if we could expand perhaps that program to maybe a couple more locations. And I don't know, is that, that's part of your report?
Yeah, and if we want to make that five lights instead of four, we absolutely can do that.
And how's, how's that being financed?
We're gonna take that out of some, our capital revenue. We're gonna essentially cut something else from the budget for next spring or increase the Prop S budget again. It can be Prop S. So we would just need to adjust the budget for that or cut something out of capital improvement.
And do you have an idea of how much each of those solar units would cost?
Last time, we inquired about $7,900 for all of the equipment. And we met with Brentwood to see how they did theirs. And our Public Works Director at the time was fairly confident that our team could install them. So it would really just be about the purchase of the equipment.
In terms of levers that we can, you know, operate at this point in time, you know, that seems like one of the more easy solutions. And I know it can hurt, but, you know, if it can help, especially if you're installing more cameras, I don't know how easy it is to pick up facial recognition without sufficient lighting. So, you know, that would be a recommendation that I would want to see followed up on with regards to lighting. And also, if, you know, if that's something that can be handled by the Maplewood Fund, let me know. That seems like a good investment that I can make in the community that might have an impact.
I'm sorry, I have one more question for the chief. I'm gonna ask your opinion on this. I don't think I've said thanks either, so I did want to say thank you because I know this has caused a lot of work for you and for Amber, and we've kept you here late, so thank you. As the expert in law enforcement and policing in the room and in the city, is it easier, you know, the optics of having 50-some calls in a calendar year to the bus shelter? Maybe you have cars there all the time, and it can look like overpolicing, and maybe, you know, the optics of that are not good. But for a public safety solution and efforts that you have to make to improve public safety in that area, is it easier for you and your police department if the benches are gone and the power is off? Or does it make no difference? If you're willing to share your opinion on that, I would like to hear it. I know you don't want to, but I would like to hear that because I think that's helpful.
Well, I will stress again, this is a community issue. I'm just looking at a perspective of public safety. With the removal of that, you know, you're taking away some of those individuals that are taken away from others, and it's unfortunate for an opportunity to congregate, drink, drugs, and that. And it's there as a space to sit down, you know, play on your phone for hours, and, you know, which has led to some disturbances. I'm not just saying that. Well, yes, removing that, I think the congregation points now, some people are now bringing in their own chairs and barbecue pits and that, you know, it's a whole nother, a whole nother matter. But there's, yes, there's a possibility of calls for service to go down with that. But as I said, we've seen makeshift chairs and those coming in. So this was just, as an opportunity we discussed, are we gonna see a decrease in the amount of calls at that location? Again, the police department will respond to whatever, you know, this is, it was an opportunity to display some of that drug activity. It really was. That's the main purpose, display some of that drug opportunity. Take the opportunities for these drug dealers to distribute it even to our vulnerable populations, you know, which isn't fair to them, and try to displace that. Let's kind of get that opportunity away for a little while.
Yeah.
So we can work our backend in these investigations and remove these drug dealers and, you know, people that do not bring good to society.
And if I could add just a little bit of additional context, the Yale Open Space has had picnic tables there.
Yes.
A number of them. We don't see that level of congregation. We don't see that level of calls. I think it's the convergence of shelter, food, place to sit, right? It's an appealing place to be because it provides you all of those amenities at once. So in my memo, as I've suggested, interventions that we place and spread out, I recognize that while we think, hey, we want to, that's expressing that we want to provide all these things. We just want to provide them in a different location, that what some of you are hearing is we want to get people out of the shelter. And this is just something that we need to continue to grapple with the right approach to take because the Yale Open Space is much bigger than the shelter. There's a lot of opportunity for us to invest, to spend money there, to create a space where people could congregate, where they can rest, where they can lie down, where they can sleep. And that really hasn't been part of the discussion in this. And we were hoping in opening that up, that some of this thinking could transition to that spot. And I'll be very open as well that in the development conversations we've had about that shelter space, it is a point of discussion. Should we invest money, public entity? Should we invest money here if you cannot keep this area under control? That is city-owned land. We have an opportunity, if we want to, to invite development partners to propose what they want to put there. We have an opportunity to sell that land to have it developed for other purposes. This is a flexible tool that you all can make decisions about. So I want us also to maybe think bigger, too, to Eric's point about, you know, what's the big picture look like here? You have assets that you can work with. We have resources that we can put into those spaces. And I did want to make sure that we brought that into the conversation here and tried to include that in the memo as an indication that we don't have a lot of money, but we have money. And we have time to engage partners, and we want to continue those conversations. So I didn't, I wanted to make sure we didn't move on from that conversation, this conversation without discussing that as well.
Yeah, no, thanks for the, thanks for the context there and the reminder. I think that's really important. And I, I just wanted to respond briefly to Mayor Greenberg, who mentioned how far Maplewood has come. You know, as somebody who's like relatively new to Maplewood in the grand scheme of things, my wife and I have lived here for five years. You know, but I've obviously been coming to Maplewood since I was a kid and utilizing the public resources and have gotten to see from the outside how far Maplewood has come as well. And when I think about problems like this that are yet to be solved, I just think about how I would love to be saying that in 30 years. You wouldn't believe what Maplewood looked like in 2025 and how much farther it's come. And so, when I'm coming at issues like this as somebody who's relatively new to the area, I'm thinking about how I want to see it when my kids are hopefully sitting behind this bench as well. So, again, I just want to say thank you so much for all the time and effort. And I'm sorry for all the time and effort we're gonna continue to put into this. But I, I think it's really important we think about being able to continue talking about how much farther Maplewood is coming.
Yeah, I think, you know, this is the kind of discussion the council needs to have. And these are the kind of problems that we need to try and solve. And appreciate your participation in the discussion. And at this point, I'm sure there's maybe one or two more items for the city manager report.
There is. I would just hate to step away from this topic without getting some direction from you all about what you'd like to see next from us. And if that is a proposal for what we recommend happens next, we're happy to put that together. Or if it is that you all want to decide for us what's gonna happen, we are open to that, too. But we do want to continue to make this a collaborative process and certainly don't want to make unilateral decisions that either you don't support or our community doesn't support. And I'm aware of the community advocacy around this issue. And I would just ask that that consider the full context of everything that we've discussed here tonight and that we're grappling with. But is there, is there a step that you all would like us to take or steps?
Prior to the Police Advisory Board being formed, I had thought about asking what the precedent was for ad hoc committees and task forces to help get community involvement in dealing with issues like this. At this point in time, I do think that bringing this issue to the Police Advisory Board sounds like it would be appropriate, but I would love to know kind of what your thoughts on that are. From my standpoint, I'd just love to see us continue to talk about this and work on this issue.
Well, I think that the Police Advisory Board needs to have conversations with the Human Services Commission. We really don't want the two of them acting independently and maybe drawing different conclusions because it is a social services issue. It is a police issue. And we need a unified set of solutions that, you know, to implement.
Can you give us an update on the space that was generously donated for us to use for a community engagement center?
Yes, we, the apartment building there has graciously donated one of the units, the old space that we used to have years ago, for the police officers to engage communities. It's gonna be kind of a community engagement center. It's an opportunity for our social services coordinator to also, you know, utilize the space. So yes, there'll be police vehicles down at that location.
When do you, when do you expect to be?
They reached out to me last week that they have it ready, and then there was a delay. So I would project in the next week and a half to two weeks.
I think that would be a great space also for our social service coordinator to be able to be in the area.
Yeah, it'll be.
Have some workspace, office hours in that area since the need is so great.
I like the idea of looking at the green space that we have close by.
Yes.
And providing, you know, those shelter services and stuff like that where people can congregate safely and just get it away from that.
can congregate safely and just get it away from that particular stop. I mean, it'd be, you know, obviously, there's a confluence of issues that are happening right at that spot. I mean, I like, you know, what Chief said about kind of dispersing it for a little bit so we can kind of figure out, you know, how to tackle the problem. But certainly, making more shelter space available that's not right there, that's close by, right, you know, would be hugely beneficial. So I'm all for that. But again, I am no expert in public safety or anything like that, so I'll be looking
In terms of giving the city manager direction, sorry to interrupt, does anyone else feel that additional lighting would, could be beneficial?
Yes.
I think it couldn't hurt. I do walk around there at night, I walk my dog down that way. It's not particularly dark, but it couldn't hurt. While I have the floor, though, I do want to mention that I agree with what Sean said. I am also for bringing back power and the bench as soon as reasonably possible, but I don't know that my opinion is the right one. So I would sort of defer to, from a public safety and administration perspective of when to do that. But I, you know, from a, what are the people, what is the feeling that I have from our constituency and what are my feelings personally? I, you know, we want a bench in the shelter, and we want power, we want it to be a functional shelter. If, you know, within reason, if that's not, you know, in the next month or whatever, fine. But I think that's got to be a goal, but it's got to be part of this bigger, you know...
Yeah, where we try to provide in another space that's close by.
Because I just, I can't go to sleep tonight and be like, well, hey, man, we got them a bench. Feel good. That doesn't feel good to me. I mean, it's great that we get it, and I want it, but that, if it stops there, we have, we failed.
I agree. I think we've got to continue talking about it. We've got to crawl before we can walk. I think if we, I'm a scientist by training, and I don't want to experiment with public safety. I also will defer to, I would like to hear city staff come back and tell us, here's what we think, here are some suggestions. I do think the Police Advisory Board would be a great place to start. They probably will need to get up to speed on this. We've been talking about it now for three or four meetings. So in the interim, I would like to hear staff recommendations for us to weigh in on or vote on or whatever it may be. I think we should consider putting back the benches with no power and breaking those two apart. Those are two variables that, you have a place where people can have respite and play on their phones or use their phone as a resource. You don't have power in the Yale space where there are tables and people aren't spending as much time there. Maybe taking those two apart helps us out. I mean, I think we should at least consider all those types of things. Again, I don't think you, you don't want to do these experiments in real time, but we're kind of doing that now and taking them away. So I would be open to anything that you guys would consider and bring back to us. But I would like to see something come back to us in the interim while we wait for these longer-term solutions.
One other item I want to just touch on, because you've mentioned the power. The power at that source, at that location, is a fluke. It is not by design, right? That is a holdover from when it was by state's shelter to use for bus operations. We did not intentionally activate that power there, and it is not consistent with our approach to publicly accessible power in any of our other city-owned spaces. So what has now been perceived as a right, you know, is, it does not actually have its origins in any intentional design. And we understand that that led to congregation because there isn't free power very many places.
Hummer has it. And I was noticing this winter, and I'm sure you all are aware, the dude in the Pontiac Grand Am that would charge up, God knows what else he was charging, but so...
There are certain parks with pavilions that you can reserve.
Okay.
And those have power, but they don't have power all the time because we can control when the power is on and off. And there are other locations that have power that we lock unless it is used for a specific purpose for an event. So we are not in the business as a municipality of just dispensing free electricity to whoever needs it. I know that sounds very harsh, but I just want to put that in some additional context that...
But we kind of do because like the library is a place where everybody, I mean, I know we don't own the library anymore, but, you know, like as a city, I mean, I think it's a weird gray area. I get what you're saying.
These are choices, but that one was not an active choice that the city made. So just wanted to kind of shape that a little bit.
Yeah, I'm for doing benches, no power, and just kind of see how it goes.
So with regards, sorry, with regards to direction, it sounds like decentralization of amenities would be another area to explore so that we don't have a confluence of power, shelter, seating, and all those things together, which would encourage, I don't want to use the word loitering, but congregation and maybe some of the negative aspects that it brings with it. Is that, is that sufficient direction?
Yes, we will work on a proposal that touches on all of these things.
Sorry, we're not...
Bring it back December 9.
More specific, we've talked about quite a few issues. So again, if you do have direction on that, if you have other items on the city manager's report?
Just that we're going to put some solar streetlights in, and it's a great start. And if you've read the report, the Wash U group did a ton of work, and we're really excited to partner with them and initiate this pilot program.
And speaking of Sustainability Commission, I think we need to put it out there that we need members.
We have two vacancies right now on the Sustainability Commission. Those individuals who were not selected for the Police Advisory Board were informed that there is an opportunity there. So, and we've also been promoting it through city social media.
Thank you. If that concludes the city manager's report, we have, it's time for public comment. And we have someone signed up?
We do, we have Ann Louise Schmidt.
That's me. I'm Ann Louise Schmidt at 7403 Lomire. And I couldn't make it in time for the first one, but I am glad to hear y'all talking about the bench thing. I've heard that term propensity for violence so much because I, part of my job involves being in the court system, and that's said a lot. I don't think that a bench contributes to propensity for violence. I think our violence problem is rooted in how much we help somebody deal with their trauma. And if it's trauma, whatever trauma, childhood trauma, I think people use substances because they want to ignore their trauma. I think that that's where we would go to best serve people, to anybody, is just to continue to go there, go there, go there, invest there, not really worry so much about a bench. So I just wanted to throw in that. I think, too, that it just, it looks bad to hear Maplewood, oh, yeah, they had some trouble with crime, and so they took away the bench and took away the power so that the unhoused can't hang out, is the story that I hear going around. And I just don't feel like that's how we want Maplewood to look. I think that, for me, too, though, bringing more money into Maplewood isn't my number one goal. My number one goal is not ever driven by money, is driven by connection with people and how can we see that everybody is beneficial and important to the community. Kind of along that same lines, I wanted to touch on, I was a part on Sunday of a group who connected with people from North County who are Latino, looking Hispanic, they are Hispanic and they're Latino. So they look Latino, they speak Spanish, and I believe that they were racially profiled by the Richmond Heights Police Department because a bunch of them have been stopped leaving work at the Galleria and then screened for ICE and passed on to ICE. And I've just been aware of this whole conversation about ICE, what are we going to do? I'm involved with some stuff in the city also, been to some trainings, people talking about like safe spaces. What is a safe space? Like, if our neighbors might be racially profiled because they speak Spanish, or like there was a person who was, who, he self-deported because they put so much pressure on him, and he was chained up in jail for, I think, four months with no end in sight. And so he self-deported back to Ecuador, but his family is still here because they racially profiled him leaving Cheesecake Factory. And he had, and he had a work permit, but he's not a full citizen yet. And so they're like, just go on back. And that's not, that's the same kind of concept to me, is like, do we have a bench that's targeted, like anti-unhoused people, you cannot lay down here, we put the bar in the middle? How are we going to look? Like, I would like for us to look like a neighborhood that's like, we care about you, person, we treat you with dignity. Oh, wow, if y'all had been in the room listening to these people share their firsthand personal stories about what it's like for their family to be traffic, targeted, not traffic, targeted, and how they're like, we, we thought America was the land for everybody, and it's not anymore. And we aren't trying to hurt anyone, we're just Latino. And we want to be here, too. And it was heart-wrenching. It was just really sad. I really want to encourage y'all to find somebody who is Latino and talk to them and hear their perspective. But I just, I want us to be a neighborhood that cares about everybody, no matter what they look like, whether they're screaming because they have trauma and schizophrenia or whatever, that we care about all of humans because they're all human and they should all be treated with equity. So thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on the list for public comment?
I guess not.
Okay, in that case, I don't believe that we would need to have a closed session, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second?
We have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting's adjourned.